Here Leslie to come forward and. Dr. Looney, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner and Commissioners, Mr. Chairman and fellow Commissioners, thank you. Our general purpose school fund budget is two hundred and thirty-six million, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and four dollars. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
All right.
Recommend that.
I'll entertain a motion for the general purpose school fund, two hundred and thirty-six million, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and nine hundred and seventy-seven, three hundred and four dollars. Commissioner Brockman, the motion.
Second.
Mr. Williams, the second. Okay.
This is to the general purpose school fund, motion to increase the appropriate salary and benefit line items for a total of nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars. To provide a two percent salary increase for a full part-time employees effective set eleven seven, eleven eleven, for the fiscal year of two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. And this will amend the final budget to two hundred and thirty-seven million, nine hundred and forty-two dollars and five hundred and eighty-five dollars. Two thirty.
I'll second that. Anticipated fund balance and also provides for the two percent for not only the professional, but classified staff.
Okay, and if I can clarify your amendment, Mr. Green.
Yes.
We can only amend the total number, so we can't go in and amend.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Their line item, so.
This is make up.
If you'll change that to amend the bottom, which in essence is.
Okay, I can do that.
The pay increase for that, so.
Get it out of the way, okay.
Okay, all right, very good. Have proper motion and second, discussion on the motion or the amendment, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, I also have a problem with this two percent increase as I did with the last ones, but I'm also a little perplexed because I don't think the school board's actually voted on this amendment. And they also get, seem to get all upset when we pass something that they haven't voted on yet, so I would move to defer this until they vote on it.
Proper motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Danner is on the second. Is it available?
Yes.
All right, do I have any discussion on the second amendment? I see none, you ready to vote? Let's see, Linda, you got it loaded?
Can I ask a question?
Uh, Commissioner Little?
To clarify the position on voting on this without the school board voting on it, where does, is that? Is that proper, do we need to wait, or what is?
With your permission, I'd like to speak to that. I have been in consultation with the school board, obviously after this issue came up at the budget committee, the school board has not had a meeting thus far. But informally is in agreement with this motion moving forward through the county commission and will act accordingly at its next regular meeting.
Commissioner Green, would your resolution be contingent on school board approval?
Under those circumstances, I figure it's appropriate when we wait till the school board votes on this.
Can you pull that resolution now, for that amendment?
Well, you want to back up, Bob, if you'll pull yours, then we can.
I'll pull the deferral if he pulls the amendment.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes. No, as far as, is, I understand why, in my own mind, to go ahead and do this without school board approval officially. I have a little reservation about that. So I would do a contention upon approval by the school board, if I may do that.
To amend your amendment.
Not pulling, not pulling it.
Mr. Legal, can you do that right now?
You only have two amendments on the floor, so I would say at this point you've got an amendment and a motion for deferral, so I don't think he can amend it after your motion for deferral. You'd have to vote on that first.
We have to vote on this now, okay, then you can, then he can adjust it.
Correct.
Okay. So we'll go back to Commissioner Barnwell's amendment. Commissioner Cook, do you have discussion on Commissioner Barnwell's amendment?
Yeah.
No, okay. Are we ready to vote on the deferral? I believe so, it's loaded on the board, if you're in favor, push the yes button, opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time, record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Yes, fifteen, no.
All right, we're back to Commissioner Green's original amendment.
And contingent upon approval by the school board.
Okay, Commissioner Smith, you good with that?
I'll make my second, agree with that.
With that, so we're clear there?
Yes.
Okay, so we, this amendment is subject to approval of the Williamson County School Board. Commissioner Cook?
Yes, I just want clarification that this is just for the non-classified?
Let me.
For the classified, I don't know the terminology.
Yes, ma'am, let me clarify.
Okay.
It's for all of our classified personnel, which include bus drivers, lunchroom workers, et cetera, secretaries. But it also includes those certified people that do not receive a two percent raise from the state. And that would be those individuals with more than twenty-one years experience.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, question for Legal Counsel, are we required to pass a budget today that is non-contingent? Or can we pass a contingent budget? I mean, could we pass a budget that said contingent upon this or that? What restrictions are there to passing a contingent or a non-contingent budget?
Basically, you don't have the ability to make any of the line items contingent. And you pass the budget, which is, if it's not in agreement with what was passed by the school board, they would have the opportunity to approve or disapprove that different total. At which point, if they agreed to it, you would have a budget that would be approved. If they disagreed with it, you would not, and you would have to come back and do the budget again, basically. At which point, if nothing was done by July thirty-first under the Budget Act, the budget that was approved and submitted by the budget committee would go into effect.
Okay, yeah, I understand that, but that doesn't really speak to a contingency that's laid upon the budget. I understand if we pass a budget that is different than what the school board has passed, that there's.
And this would be, this would be a different budget if you approved this raise contingent on their approval. If they agreed with it, you, the two bodies would be in agreement. You could not make it conditioned on, you could not make anything in the line item, a condition that would change their line items, if that makes sense.
Isn't, aren't these changing their line items?
It is a change in the total budget, that's all you have the power to do.
Okay, and we have the ability to do that contingent?
You have the ability to change the total, but not the line items.
Right, I understand that, but contingent upon other actions.
Yeah, basically, all you're doing is, is you're passing it, if they don't agree with it, we're back to a non-agreement between the parties. So the contingency is really only a specificity of a formality, it already occurs. If you passed it without the contingent language, it would still be contingent on their approval. Or you would have a disagreement between the budgets, and we'd have to, you'd have to negotiate that or come back with a different budget.
So the contingency is really a moot point?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Danner?
This has nothing to do with that. I appreciate those questions, though. I approved the schools' budget in the education committee meeting, because I appreciated the two point three that you went back and cut. You're one of the few segments of our body that's growing, and yet you did, you're one of the few that made cuts. However, with this two percent raise, when we just, when it's, when the whole budget is contingent upon a tax increase, I can't, I could not support it.
Anyone else? We're ready to vote? If you're all, all in favor of the amendment of the schools' general purpose fund, push the yes button, opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time, record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Seventeen yes, six no.
Motion passes, okay, back now to the original motion. Of the general purpose school fund is amended to a new total of two hundred and thirty-seven million, nine hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Are we ready to vote? Commissioner Herbert?
I'd like the motion to amend.
The Williamson County school budget, reduce it by two million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand and twenty-nine dollars. And I'd like to hand out these to show you where I got the figures from.
All right, proper motion, we need a second. Commissioner Danner?
Would you like for me to explain my calculations?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all of these are not, it's not decreasing last year's budget at all, instead it's decreasing the additional amount they asked this year. And it was five hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two for regular instruction teachers. It's to reduce eleven, they were funded last year by federal funds, which still leaves over almost fifty-one teachers over last year's budget. A hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-six special ed teachers, that reduces three of those, it still leaves sixteen more than they had last year. It's a hundred and thirty-five thousand, eighty-eight dollars for nurses, that's reduced that two point eight, that still leaves a nurse for Summit and Clovercroft. Doesn't affect any of the nurses from last year. Three hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred for assistant principals, that's to reduce that three point five assistant principals, that still leaves five additional principals over last year's budget. And that still leaves them for the two new schools, and that leaves three to evaluate the teachers, or they could make it four to evaluate the teachers, because they're not going to be able to evaluate them in the summertime. And so they shouldn't have to pay them a full salary. A million dollars for books, that still leaves two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five, four fifty-three in the budget, which is an increase of twenty-five percent over last year. And then one hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-three for cleaning services. They requested four hundred and thirty thousand to clean two new schools, which will only be partially occupied and will not be occupied during the summer. So it equaled to a total of two million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand and twenty-nine.
Thank you, Commissioner Herbert, Commissioner Barnwell?
I was under the impression we couldn't do line item changes, so, but I have, I have another amendment. And my amendment is to basically reduce the school budget by eight million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars and nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And I say this because last year, with the budget they presented to us, we scrimped and saved and moved eleven cents from other funds into the school budget last year. Now that gave them another six point eight million dollars in revenue, at the expense of other funds. And according to Leslie's early estimate, there are eight and a half million dollars under the budget we gave them last year. So if this budget, two thirty-six is valid, they're probably going to miss it again by eight and a half million dollars, so we might as well just reduce it now.
What's the total again, Commissioner?
Uh, the new total would be two twenty-eight, four eighty-four, three sixty-six, which is above their budget for last year.
And how much is that discounted, you threw out there, eight million something?
Eight million, four ninety-two, nine thirty-eight, which is what they, Leslie's estimate of two hundred and eighteen million spent versus the two twenty-six, four ninety-two that we gave them. And we gave them eleven cents from other funds, and they didn't even spend that money.
Are you amending Commissioner Herbert's amendment up to that amount?
No, I'm just, this is a new amendment.
A new amendment?
Probably need to take care of the first one before you amend the second one.
But I don't think, legally, we can't offer an amendment line by line.
No, you can't, you can't offer an amendment line by line, her amendment was for, to reduce by two million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand plus. If you were to amend that number, that would be the amendment, one amendment total, if your amendment of the amendment passed. If you're saying you want to do it separate from the two million two that she's done, then you would want to clear her amendment before you raised your amendment.
Okay, then realistically, my amendment is, is to reduce it by another, the difference between Commissioner Herbert's number and the eight four ninety-two, nine thirty-eight.
That'll work.
Okay.
Okay, for a total reduction.
For a total reduction of eight four ninety-two, nine thirty-eight.
Commissioner Bane, on the amendment's amendment?
Well, actually, on the first amendment, Commissioner Lynch's.
Okay.
Herbert's amendment. Could you explain, do you have a copy of this, did they give you a copy?
Yes, sir, I just received.
Okay, yeah, some of it I have a pretty good grasp of, some of it I don't. The books, for example, I know we got two new schools opening, I know there's a replacement schedule for other schools. And is, do we need anything above the two point eight, three five million, what's, what's the deal on that?
Thank you, sir. I certainly appreciate the difficult position that this commission is in. And as Mrs. Danner eloquently stated earlier, the school board did work very forthrightly to try to minimize the impact on any increase in budget needs over the previous year. I will tell you that I stand before you today deeply convicted that the budget that we have submitted to you is a very reasonably fiscally conservative budget that will allow us to continue to stand before you to be the first in the state. In my opinion, any cuts that you make beyond what we've already cut, you've already asked us to cut one time, we did, prior to coming to today's meeting. If we make additional cuts, you're going to be sacrificing the quality of education that we've afforded our citizenry in Williamson County. The million dollars in textbooks that we're talking about, the one area that we're not number one in is mathematics. The money that we have set aside in this budget for this next budget year is to buy new math textbooks that align to the new state course of study. In the absence of those books, we can't physically ask our teachers to go and find resources to meet the curriculum. Their current textbook does not do that. In addition, for the last couple of years, we have not bought textbooks for all of our students, we've been buying classroom sets. So if, my response to you would be respectfully, that can, can we cut the budget? Sure, we can, we can cut it to zero, but the budget that we have submitted to you is the budget that we need to give you the quality that your constituents demand out of us. I hope I answered your question.
Well, eventually. Let's go back.
Sorry, I'm on my Pentecostal.
Yeah, you did good, I was, I was, I was pleased with that. The regular instruction teachers cut by eleven, I was under the impression, and I think a lot of the other commissioners were, that when some of these federal monies were accepted, the word was out at the time that when this federal money goes away, these positions will go away. Well, it doesn't look like they all have, so.
Well, that's a fair question.
Help me with that.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
What we did in the last two budget cycles, including the year that's just ending, is instead of coming to the commission for additional teaching positions because of student growth, we paid for it out of the oral money, the temporary money. It was, it did, we had to have the teachers, there was no choice there. So the question was, how did we fund those teachers? We chose to fund them out of temporary money, instead of coming into you asking for more local money. In hindsight, perhaps we should have asked you for more local money and let that other money be used for something different, such as computers. But we didn't, we used it for personnel because we had the need, and you didn't have the funds to provide for that need. So it's not that we're keeping employed unnecessary positions, these are positions that were required in previous years because of student growth. It's just how we used the resources that we had to meet the needs related to that growth. So these positions, if you don't want to pay for them at a general fund, there is no other pot of money anymore, because the federal money's gone.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, it was brought to my attention, we don't have a second on Commissioner Barnwell's motion. All right, Commissioner Bryant, Brandon Bryant, so, all right, we're good there. Commissioner Danner?
I haven't had a chance to really speak on this yet, since the second.
All right, I thought you'd already spoken, go ahead.
That was introducing it.
Okay.
I would say, in my opinion, there's a basic flaw in the, in the building of the school system budget. It has nothing to do with teachers, whatever, but in the last three years, you've underspent your budget by six point eight million in oh eight, oh nine, seven point six million, oh nine, ten, and about eight and a half million dollars this year. I'm not saying that the money's not needed, I'm just saying you have a basic flaw in your budgeting system, and you shouldn't be asking for this much money if you did your budget correctly. There's, there's a flaw in your system to underspend by that much money every single year. You need to go back and take a look at it and go from the ground up or something, because you're underspending every year significantly. Now I'm done.
Commissioner Danner?
Two percent pay raise, that just came up, so this is not, and also, with all due respect, Commissioner Herbert and I are customers of yours. And if the two of us, I would agree with her cuts, I could support, she's laid this out, and I did tell you in the education committee that if I could see the other money, that I would have hoped you would have cut four to five million instead of the two point three. And I think this does that for me, this would allow you, in my mind, to have the raises, which were not put forth in the beginning. I mean, if you're not going to cut those, then we would, we got to cut somewhere. And so I could support Commissioner Herbert's motion, I don't know that I could support Commissioner Barnwell. So can, can we vote on Commissioner Hayes', Commissioner Herbert's first?
No.
Vote on Barnwell's.
Okay, and then after we vote on that, can I make a motion?
If it fails, you would vote Commissioner Herbert's.
All right.
Commissioner Ryan?
Dr. Looney and Ms. Holman, just two questions for you. Point of concern that I have is, earlier today, you mentioned that for the fiscal year twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, the schools spent approximately two hundred and eighteen million dollars. The budget is now essentially two hundred and thirty-eight million dollars, understanding it's part of the two percent pay raise. That leaves us about twenty million dollars, nineteen million dollar difference between the two years. Dr. Looney, earlier today, you mentioned, and I'm doing some fast math, and I apologize if my figures aren't exactly right, but you mentioned that we're anticipating eight hundred and fifty-two new students to approximately even a thousand new students. Based on nineteen million dollars of additional spending, that comes out to be about, and if my figures are correct, nineteen thousand to a little over twenty-two thousand dollars per student. And if, if memory serves me correctly, the average right now is about seventy-eight hundred, is that, is that fair?
Slightly below seventy-eight hundred, yes.
Okay, and I understand we're opening two new schools, but that, that seems like a very large gap. And if I may, after the answer, Dr. Looney, you have one, one other question for you.
Sure, well, what it doesn't speak to is the eleven and a half million dollars that we lost in federal money.
Okay, and I guess, you're, explain this to me like I am a fifth grader, because that's where I'm a little off.
Well, we, we received stimulus money for the past two years.
Okay.
That money will not be available in the next year. So we're losing an eleven and a half million dollars of federal dollars that has to be either made up by local funding and/or a budget cut, one of the two.
Okay, but I mean, as far as what we're spending per student, that shouldn't have any impact on it, would it?
Well, sure it does, because you're only looking at the local dollar side, you're not looking at the federal dollar side.
Okay, okay, I understand that now, thank you. And that, that makes up for the additional eleven million dollars per student?
Well.
Or eleven thousand, excuse me, eleven thousand?
I'm not looking at numbers either, but if you take the, if you take the loss that we have in federal money, and our growth, and the fact that we're opening two new schools, and the fact that we need to buy textbooks, the answer is yes, sir.
Okay, the second question I have, and this is, this is going to sound like a cynical question, and it's not, out of curiosity, we're talking about the need for new math textbooks. And as I said, I know this is going to come across cynical, and it's not meant to be, is math hasn't changed a lot over the years. So where, where's the disconnect as far as what we have to teach the kids, what's being tested? Because, you know, a hundred years ago, two plus two equaled four, and that's the way it'll be from now on. So where, and that's, again, just, if you can explain that to me.
Sure, you're absolutely right, addition hasn't changed over the last two hundred years. But what has changed is when we teach specific content and at what grades we teach them at. As an example, one of the changes is the fourth grade content, that was fourth grade content in previous years, is now third grade content, and it's not perfectly aligned. So in order for teachers not to have a resource that covers information from A to Z in third grade, they would have to literally go to multiple sources to find content, to make copies of that content in the hopes of not violating a copyright law in the process, to piece together a textbook, because the textbooks that we have don't follow the sequence required by the state now.
Okay, thank you for your explanation, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Commissioner Barnwell's amendment? Commissioner Williams?
Chairman, Dr. Looney, just kind of in a nutshell, I understand what you just said. Because of the loss of eleven and a half million dollars in federal monies, and because of the growth in new, new students that are expected to come in anywhere from eight fifty to a thousand, and then because of the two new schools, that's the reason that this budget is being asked for, and you already cut two point three million dollars.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Is that, when you figure all that in, the loss, the gain, and what's coming in, would that just basically be holding the students in this county status quo?
The answer is yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment, Commissioner Barnwell's amendment? I see none, you ready to vote? We're voting to amend the general purpose school fund to decrease it by an additional six million, one hundred and ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars to a total of two hundred and twenty-eight million, four hundred and eighty.
I don't think that's technically correct.
Four.
I know, it's increasing the amendment.
Right.
Passage of this would only change the amendment, it would not change the budget yet, because the overall amendment would have to pass.
So the total needs to come off.
Take the total off, okay. Is that good?
So we're amending her amendment.
Well.
It's an additional, how about you?
She, she's got an amendment on the floor for two point two.
Okay, but this is just amended at six.
Two point one.
Okay, all right, so. So this amendment to the amendment would decrease the general purpose school fund six million, one hundred and ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars. Ready to vote, it's loaded on the machine, if you're in favor, push the yes button, opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time, record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Two yes, twenty-one no.
The amendment fails, back to the original amendment, Commissioner Herbert's, to reduce the general purpose school budget by two million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, twenty-nine dollars. Discussion on that amendment.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Ford?
One quick question, since we're talking about textbooks, I noticed that when the board.
Since we're talking about textbooks, I noticed that when the board went back and cut the 2.3 million, that they, part of that reduction was in the textbook line item. Can you speak to that, please, sir?
Yes, sir. As I stated previously, one of the things that we've been doing to save the taxpayers' money in the last couple of years is not buying classroom sets. We want to buy classrooms, I mean, we want to buy individual textbooks for every child. That will not be the case in health science for this next year. The board has taken those individual books back out of the budget, so we will only use classroom sets. Is there another category?
And grammar, I'm told.
And grammar, I'm told. So, health science and grammar.
Commissioner Danner.
Just want to clarify that this amendment, we're not line iteming, that the school board would go back, if this were to pass, the school board would then decide how to divvy this up. This was just an example of Commissioner Herbert showing us where it could be done without, and I agree with her, without diminishing the quality of education for our children who are in the school system. So it's just a, we're just reducing the total amount.
If I may interject something here, if this passes, and I understand we're cutting the total budget, and there's 11 teachers here that you don't hire, that supposedly aren't funded, but then you need them, we'll come back with fund balances, is that correct? And hire those later?
Well, if this resolution passes, this would require our school board to go back to work and try to find the budget, and then we would have to come back, I'm assuming, and have additional meetings with you. And I don't mean to sound alarmist, but I would be growing in concern that we would be able to start school on time if we were going back to make additional cuts beyond what we had already agreed to in all the previous meetings.
Ready to vote? All in favor of decreasing the General Purpose School Fund by $2,296,029? If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Nine yes, 14 no.
Motion fails. Back to the General Purpose School Fund.
Actually, I think we voted on the 2% salary.
We voted on the salary, didn't we?
Is that what we're voting?
We already voted on 17 to 6.
Yeah. We're back to the General Purpose School Fund as amended, which is $237,942,598. Any discussion on that? I see none. It's loaded on the machine. Commissioner Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm back on the medical insurance line item. In the county budget, we were budgeting the same amount as previous years, so I think we had passed an amendment. I thought we had passed an amendment for schools also, but yet I see an increase in here. Let's see, are we increasing here from 9,000 to 10,000 here? What do we?
It's the money he was talking about, in the 11 million. Last year, we used our money to fund that increase for the medical insurance. I didn't go back to fund that one.
It didn't go back, so the amount that's in the budget this year is still at the nine?
Yeah, the middle year is at nine, and then next year is at 10.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? See none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
16 yes, 7 no.
Resolution passes. Next thing, Central Cafeteria Fund, Dr. Looney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as you know, the Central Cafeteria Fund is self-supporting. We are requesting a budget of $9,194,412.
I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Brockman, Commissioner Cook the Second. Any discussion on the Central Cafeteria Fund?
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes, I might offer a motion to increase the appropriate salary and benefits for line items by a total of $70,902, provided 2% salary increase for full and part-time employees effective 7/11/11 for the 2011-12 fiscal year, which will bring the new total to $9,265, to $9,265,314.
Proper motion. Let's see, who, a second. Commissioner Hayes. Commissioner Danner.
Is this increase covered by self-funding?
Yes, sir.
It's not going to fall outside, okay.
Yeah. Any other discussion? You ready, Linda? It's on the board. If you're in favor of this amendment, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
20 yes, 3 no.
Resolution passes. Oh, that's the amendment, I'm sorry. So back to the Central Cafeteria Fund as amended. Any discussion on that? I see none. If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
21 yes, 2 no.
Resolution passes. Extended School Program Fund, Dr. Looney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Extended School Program is self-funded as well. We're proposing a budget of $1,576,481. Do recommend your approval.
Need a motion?
No approval.
Mr. Brockman, Commissioner Smith the Second. Commissioner Green.
I'd like to offer a motion to increase the appropriate salary and benefit items by a total of $24,883, to provide a 2% salary increase for the full and part-time employees effective 7/11/11 for the 2011-2012 fiscal year, bringing the new total to $1,601,364.
Proper motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Hayes. Any discussion on the amendment? I see none. You got it on the machine, Linda. If you're in favor of the amendment, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
20 yes, 3 no.
Resolution passes. Back to the fund as amended. Any discussion on that as amended? I see none. Ready to vote? If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
21 yes, 2 no.
Resolution passes. So, let's see.
Okay, now we're going to be voting on the town, it's the total county budget as amended, and they're going to give us a...
Okay. Now we're ready to vote on the total county budget as amended, and we're waiting on that new total.
No, she could ask, just give us a total.
Ready to vote? If you're in favor of the grand total, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
17 yes, 6 no.
Budget passes. Yes, Commissioner Williams?
Commissioner Burke couldn't be here today, and he did send us an email, and the mayor, Anderson, stating that, per my comments at the close of tonight's budget meeting, I wish again to apologize in advance for my inability to attend this Monday's commissioner meeting. A job-related obligation has forced me out of town, and I deeply regret missing such an important meeting. For the record, I do support the budget, and missing meetings is not something I take lightly. I appreciate your understanding, and again, my regrets. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move this to be made part of the minutes and of the record.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. So what we got to vote on?
Seven eleven one as amended. Because this part has not been voted on, and that's crucial.
Linda got that. It's been brought to my attention, we need to vote on 7/11/1 as a whole, as amended. So we'll do that, but...
You voted on the total budget, but you haven't voted on the resolution.
All right, you ready, Linda? It's on the board. If you're in favor of 7/11/1, push the yes button.
We need to move it.
No, we have a motion.
The 7/11/1 as amended.
Ready to vote? We're voting on 7/11/1 as amended. Which includes all the amendments, so... Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
17 yes, 6 no.
Resolution passes. Moving on, 7/11/2, resolution fixing the tax levy in Williamson County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2011. Commissioner Green.
I have wanted, I really hadn't been sure where I wanted to make this discussion, because I do support the budget, I support what the school system has done, but within the last couple of weeks, I need to speak to something that's bothered me and some of my constituents. And that is what some of them consider to be, an inequity in programs that are being presented. I know we don't have anything to do with programs, but we do have things to do with funding. And when my constituents are being asked to fund programs that their students don't have access to, then it makes it very difficult for me to support the things that I want to support. I'm speaking primarily to the program at Summit High School that's going to offer an engineering course, and I'd like to ask some questions, if I could, Mr. Chairman, in regard to that.
Okay. Dr. Looney?
Can you read?
Dr. Looney, I understand that this program was approved by the board for Summit High School. Will that program be made available to other schools, high schools within the district?
Thank you for your question. It certainly is not intended to exclude other schools. The program that you're speaking to is part of the career technical umbrella, and every school has been in the past at liberty to choose the types of programs that best meet the interests of the students at an individual school. Auto Body, as an example. Some of our schools offer culinary arts. So if there is another school that's interested in the engineering program, we certainly would be supportive of that move. It's part of the career technical education programming process. Now, having said that, we do have two other high schools that in the last few weeks have expressed interest, and I'm sure they'll be working with Jackie Baggett, our Career Technical Education Director.
If I can follow up with it, then other schools will have the ability to offer those programs as well. Will any students be allowed to attend Summit High School if those programs are not introduced at another high school?
The potential is there. The potential is not there for the current or the upcoming year, because those decisions have already been made for out-of-zone students. But if Summit High School is the only, ends up being the only school that offers the STEM program, then just in the same way as the automobile program at Franklin, students could opt to go there through open enrollment.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask one more question?
One more.
Then in regard to that, this is not, because what I read in the paper, it was a program that the principal wanted and felt like was needed there. This will not, this year, take students from another school system, is that correct? And other schools, or not school system, but from another school, and other schools by the following year could have the opportunity of creating that program as well?
The answer is, to the first part of your question, the STEM program has attracted some students from independent high school. To my knowledge, it has not attracted students from any of the other high schools that we serve. The second part of your question relates to the 2012-13 school year. And as I stated previously, the school principal has the authority to work with his staff and the Career Technical Education program to identify those programs that best match the needs of kids. Now, I need to put a caveat there. Only programs that are viable will be allowed to operate in our school system. So if high school B chooses to have a STEM program, but only gets 10 students to enroll in that program, then that's not a viable program, and it won't exist. So to the extent that a high school can offer and maintain a viable program, it's in all of our best interests certainly to offer those types of programs.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. Just one more statement. Equity is very important to me.
Yes.
The fact that all our students have access to the same education throughout the county, that's very important to me. I've talked with people and said, this doesn't offer this, and I don't want my students to go to this high school because they don't offer that. My answer to them is, I want every high school, I want every school that we have in the county to be offered, or be able to educate everybody on an equal basis. That's the basis of my comments. I'm not trying to control what the board does, I know we can't do that, but I have a responsibility to make sure that I think things are done equitably.
Yes, we're on the same team. Thank you.
Let's get back on track. Commissioner Danner, what?
We're talking on the tax levy, right?
Well, yeah. We need to get back on there. Did we, we didn't get a motion yet, so...
I was getting a motion.
The rest of y'all request to speak, is it on this resolution?
There's a motion, second.
We do have a motion, second. Okay.
So we're ready, we have discussion?
Yeah. On the resolution, 7/11/2.
Okay. If we know we're going to save an estimated $10 million with the bidding out of the healthcare, and we know there could be another $3 to $4 million saved by moving our 600 employees that are 65 and over to a Medicaid Advantage program, and we could even save another couple million by instituting an HSA or an HRA plan, we don't need a tax increase. I don't understand why we are so bent on raising pay raises and trying to increase the tax rate, when we know we could see savings. I knocked on 2,000 doors, I stopped counting at 2,000, and I told people that I wouldn't raise property taxes, and no one said, yes, I would like you to raise property taxes without making any cuts. And I think this is irresponsible of a board that 23 of us ran with an R in front of our name and called ourselves fiscal conservatives, and I would hope that we would stay true to our campaign promises.
Commissioner Brockman?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to offer a little background...
R in front of our name and called ourselves fiscal conservatives, and I would hope that we would stay true to our campaign promises.
Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to offer a little background support of this resolution. I, I think Commissioner Hayes was very eloquent in describing Williamson County and how we've been managed and why we're so successful, and, and why people move here, why people stay here, why people really love this county. And she talked about quality education, she talked about the, the excellence that we have, and you've heard the statistics across the state where we're number one, we care about that. It's what, it's what this community cares about, and we've been able to accomplish a lot. So the quality of life, you know, the, the beauty that surrounds us, you know, I grew up in Nashville, but Williamson County was always like the garden, it was, you know, it was just rolling hills and, and horses, and we have all of that, and that's why companies have come here. But they've also come here because of our low tax rate. This continues the conservative values that I've seen on this commission through the years, and to have the tax rate at two thirty-one continues to be one of the lowest rates in this area, and when you start comparing us across state lines to communities that are similar to us in terms of demographics, you know, this just looks unbelievable because we're able to offer with the infrastructure that we provide, you know, green infrastructure and, and schools, you know, it's the reason why we're successful. You don't get a triple A bond rating by mismanaging money. And so huge kudos to David Coleman and Mayor Anderson for, for looking at our budget each year, this year in particular, and making sure that the quality of life, property values are strong, and this is a wonderful place to be. So I just, I want to say that, didn't want to get on a soapbox or anything, but I think it's important for people who are listening to understand that, that we have managed in a conservative way, and we will continue to do that, and I think this reflects it today.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, I concur with Commissioner Danner on this. You know, we bu- only budget our revenues at ninety-two percent of, of property tax collections, and I just feel that hasn't been a bad thing because we've never raised people's taxes. This year, we're budgeting at ninety-two percent and we're raising people's taxes. If you all read the spreadsheet I sent you yesterday, you'll notice that the, in the general, County General Fund and the General Purpose Schools Fund, this eight percent unbudgeted revenue covers the need of the additional revenue raised by the tax increase request. So in those two funds, I'm, I'm pretty sure we don't need a tax increase. Last year, when we were given the fund balance report, the estimate fund balance report for this year, the number was sixty-five million, sixty-five million and change, and that sounded pretty bad. The actual fund balance, if you read the report today, is ninety-seven million five. So it's thirty, thirty-two million dollars higher than what was estimated last year. I think the fund balance is very sufficient to cover the entire tax increase. And this is a year, we should not be raising taxes on our, on our residents, and we do have the cash to pick it up on a one-year basis, and I think we ought to, we ought to recognize that.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I first would like to associate myself with the remarks of Commissioner Brockman, certainly I share every one of them. This county didn't get to where it is today by being mismanaged. This county didn't get to be number one in so many areas because this commission was irresponsible. I resent those things. Most of the people that have moved here have moved here because they like this quality of life. They love to see our school systems number one. They like to utilize our park, our parks and all these things. This is a great county and a physically strong and, and conservative county. The only problem we have is people looking for constituencies when there's no problems. And I ju- I'm just awfully, extremely proud of being a part of this county because our constituents expect to be number one. If you walk out of that door and give them anything but number one, you're not going to be around long. And I hope that each of you will support, support your county officials, Mayor Anderson, Mr. Coleman, and the Budget Committee. This has been an extremely hard budget year because you had so many things that would play well on the national level that were good twenty-second spins on the local level, but they made no sense on the local level. Because we've been managing conservatively for the entire time, where they do make sense on another level where you borrowing money to operate a budget with, not to build things with, then it does make sense there, but it doesn't here. I encourage each one of you to support your constituents and support this budget. Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I too would like to certainly commend Commissioner Hayes and Commissioner Brockman for what they had to say. I think we're all in agreement that Williamson County is seen as a leader within certainly middle Tennessee, if not the entire state, if not the entire south. My concern with this tax increase is centered around two things right now. Right now, our economy is hurting, even here in Williamson County, and to, to suck this amount of money out of our private enterprises, away from our merchants, is going to be felt. That there's just, there's no other way to put it. When you suck that amount, tens of million or millions of dollars out of the marketplace, that's that much less money that's going to be spent on our merchants. That's, that's just basic economics. When an economy's hurting, you don't increase taxes. To Commissioner Hancock's point, sure, there's, there's a lot of differences between a national and a local level, but certain parts of economics overlays both of those. The second thing is, and as I mentioned earlier today, for people in the eleventh district, I can't speak for the rest of the county, but there are people in the eleventh that are hurting. They're having difficulty paying their bills, and now we're going to go to them now and say, we need more money. That's why I'm having trouble with this right now. It's not saying that we're being irresponsible or that we're frivolous people's money, right now, people are hurting, and we're asking them to comp up even more money. Oh, it's Williamson County, sure, you can afford it. No, there are people in this county that cannot. And that's why I respectfully will decline to support this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Coop?
Well, I agree with the comments that Commissioner Brockman made and Commissioner Hayes. I've lived here for twenty-eight years, and I've lived in other places before that without telling my age, but the taxes were two and three times what we're paying here, and the quality of life and the things that we have are much better than anyplace else that I've lived. It's hard because whenever we start a budget year, we never have the, the vision in our heads that we're going to raise taxes. We do everything that we can within means, and so this is unusual for Williamson County. Our schools are great, parks, everything is great. Plus unlike Commissioner Ryan and Commissioner Danner, my constituents want the increase. There's lots of young families, they want the best schools, libraries, everything. So I, I would ask everyone to support this issue.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, I'm not going to be long or say anything that, other than when I walked over two thousand houses and, and went through different places, I got people that said, raise my taxes if it means it would hurt our education system or the quality of life, and I can prove pretty much every bit of it. I have been a conservative for as lo- much longer than some of you've lived here, and I'm just going to tell you right now that, that we need to support what is best for the county, not what is best for an immediate district. We represent a whole county. Now folks, let's get on with business and get on with afternoon and go on and either support or not support it, but we've got, we've got to do what this, this county needs, and it, unfortunately, is going to probably have to be a tax increase this year. I hate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Hayes?
I'm often asked if I've lived here all of my life, and my answer is not yet. But I do plan, I do plan to remain here the rest of my life, hopefully, if I don't get run out. But I do know that we do need new revenue. The people who have been here as many years as I have even recognize we need new revenue. There would have been new revenue had the referendum on our wheel tax passed several years back. No, it wouldn't have been enough to cover all this budget, but if we'd had four million per year for these years, we would have had more money and wouldn't be facing this. If we all did something as simple as shopping at home for our sales tax dollars and quit stop shopping online where we don't pay any sales tax, but shop at home, we would have a better situation too. So there are things that we could do. There have been eight years since we've had any tax increase, and yet, education hasn't been the only thing that's had growth. Every department has had growth, and yet, we've asked them to hold the line or we've decreased their, their budgets, and never with very much, if any, complaint whatsoever. I sat in a budget committee meetings because that's where I learned so much, and I watched different departments coming in this year and taking from their programs to add to electricity and gasoline, the things they had to have. I saw programs being compromised because of that. There is a rural library in this county that had a leaking roof. There is no money to re-roof that, so I saw our excellent property committee work day in and day out to patch that roof, to make a temporary fix so no more library books would be learned. These things, ladies and gentlemen, are going on here because we have really watched our budgets and watched our money. This has been a sound commission. We have no tax increases over eight years. We've had solid management with Mayor Anderson, our budget committees, and Mr. Coleman, and I can't think of any other reason why we would not want to con- continue this type of management of our committee. I also consider myself a conservative, but I'm a conservative with, who believes in quality of life, and sometimes we have to pay for those things. We have to pay to make the best better. And yes, this will possibly hurt some of my constituents, and that was one reason I worked so hard with many of you to get our tax relief programs on. We heard this morning that close to thirty-four hundred applicants, some of them doubled up, but thirty-four hundred applications have been filed for tax relief. There are other people out there who need to qualify, and that would help. I continue to go on to look for grants. You remember how many things we've had to come to us for sponsorships, for grants, for donations? We seek other money, but sometimes we have to make the rubber meet the road, and we need to pay for the quality of life we have. If we had not had the rapid growth over the last ten years, we would not need this raise. So I really think, or this increase, I really think the people who come in late need to have to help pay, and I really believe in this time that I must support this, this increase. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know everybody thinks I'm going to call for the question. I'm just wanting to make a brief comment. I support this resolution, along with my co-commissioner, Ms. Brockman and Ms. Hayes and Commissioner Hancock. But I'm also doing this to me, you know, when I do a tax increase. It's not just like I'm going to try to do something to the public, I'm doing this to me too. And, and the ten million dollar figure that Commissioner Danner mentioned earlier, we heard that comment this morning, I understand that gentleman did not get the bid, which that may have had something to do with his comments. So when you look at the overhaul picture and what this county has meant, and I've raised basically three kids in this county, and they live in this county, and my daughter lives under Commissioner Green's auspices over there and Commissioner Little's auspices, and I have a granddaughter that's going to Summit High School this year, and she's a very free spirit, and I call her my born Democrat. She's, you know, she's going to be my war protester and, and all that, and I told my, my daughter to water it and make it grow, don't try, try to have her, you know. So we do have a quality of life here. Like I said, I'm doing this to me, I'm doing it to Ms. Brockman, and we support this. It's not just the people of the community out here. I'm proud of this community, it's, I appreciate being able to serve the community, my constituents. I was talking to Sheriff Long this morning about some problems we got up on the National Trace and seeing what we can do, talked to Eddie Hood, and the departments are very responsive when you talk to them. Mayor Anderson's office is very responsive. I don't like divisiveness, I don't like tax raises anybody, anybody else, but common sense will tell you as a body, if you put tax raises to the public to vote, the public is never going to vote for a tax raise, never. They showed that in the wheel tax vote, seventy-five, twenty-five, it was defeated. The issue when the sales tax came up, I guarantee you, it would have been the same thing. Do you think the people are going to vote for a tax increase? No, that's not going to do it. And the only thing that makes this whole body work is somebody has got enough guts to stand up to the, to the lick log, as my old judge used to say, and do what's right, and do what you have to do, and that's what we're going to do here. I, I believe that. So I'm asking the commission to support this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ford?
Chairman, I, I think everything that's, needs to be said, has been said, maybe not everybody said it, but everything needs to be said, has been said, so I'd like to call the question.
We have twenty-three seconds? I think Commissioner Smith was the first one. All in favor of calling the question, signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right. Are you ready to vote? Resolution seven eleven two. All in favor, push yes button, opposed, you know button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Seventeen, yes. Seven, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven eleven three, resolution to making appropriations to nonprofit charitable organizations of Williamson County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and eleven and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve. Entertainer motion? Commissioner Green? Do I have a second? Commissioner Little, second. So sure, it's Commissioner Green. Yeah, explanation, Commissioner Green?
I think it's still explanatory in the, in the cap, in the title up there, but, no, Williamson County recognizes some of those nonprofit organizations and charities within the county that offer services that we're in great need and the funds to carry those on to nonprofit and charitable work, and this is an effort to assist those in their, in their mission.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. After much of the comments on here, obviously, some of these entities do very important work in the community, they are truly charitable organizations. And although it's set up as a 501(c)(6), the Convention Visitors Bureau is not to be considered a charitable organization. It was organized under a committee put together by Mayor Anderson several years ago. It operates almost on a contractual basis. It's currently funded by the City of Franklin, and you see some funds from, from Williamson County. The efforts of this organization save households across the county over three hundred dollars in property tax value each year because of the sales tax, hotel motel tax, and other taxes that their efforts bring in, putting people in hotels, bringing in tourists, people who spend money and then go home and don't require any further infrastructure. I must tell you, in, over the last four years, they, along with our county departments, have, have had to make do each year with less, and the original agreement, if you will, that was intact pretty much in the first year, was that the funding governments would provide twenty-five percent of their hotel motel tax in order to fund the CVB. City of Franklin has continued with that. They have, they have been steady in their efforts. The county has been funding at about seventeen percent. The, the idea of providing a portion of the hotel motel tax at a fixed amount provides an incentive, the more they do, the better they do, the more they get to be able to do even more, almost on a contractual type basis. So I, I have this comment every year that, that they should not be considered a charitable organization. They're an organization that, that has done tremendous work while underfunded, and they continue to grow our numbers year after year. And that's my comment.
Commissioner Danner?
There's one item on here that I know we all get phone calls and we get conversations...
There's one item on here that I know we all get phone calls and we get conversations on. It's not, I don't consider it a charitable organization. It's a very good organization. It's a lovely library. But I have promised people I would put this to a twenty-four commission vote, and that is the Brentwood Library. I'd like to make a motion that we not subsidize that library with the seventy-two thousand nine hundred sum that we continue to subsidize it with.
Proper motion. Commissioner Barnwell is the second. Discussion on the motion. Commissioner Cook?
It would cost the county a lot more money than the seventy-one thousand to support a library in Brentwood. Brentwood and Franklin are the biggest contributors to county coffers with taxes. When anything is built in Brentwood that the county wants to build, they go beyond what anyone else would do. They build the roads, they give money towards it, and Doug Hood's here, and he could really tell you. And with the schools, that, they do everything, give you all the things, and then you're gonna take seventy-one thousand dollars away. I think that's awful.
Commissioner Ryan?
This is a question for the mayor, actually. I, I believe during the, during some of our negotiations within the Budget Committee, Mayor, didn't, didn't we pass a, I guess it wasn't a resolution, but a measure where if Brentwood Library did not agree to host our county elections, then we would not, we would not fund that? And then, did they not come back and say they were not going to host those elections? That...
Mr. Chairman?
I just wanna make sure nothing has changed.
Go ahead.
Okay.
The comment was made, we were looking for a place to house our early voting at the Brentwood Library. In making contact with the Brentwood Library during that early voting, not just that one specific day...
Yes, sir.
It would hurt their programs out at the Brentwood Library. That message was received by our office, and in one of our budget meetings, I don't remember which one, we retracted that and voted again to go ahead and give them that money.
No, yeah, I do remember that. I just didn't know if anything else has changed. Okay.
No.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, I'm supporting... Commissioner Dan around this, because just for some points of interest, Brentwood spends three hundred and eight thousand dollars a year on books. Our whole county system can only spend a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars on books. We basically give Brentwood almost as much money to buy books as we give our own county library system. And I think that's, that's wrong. I mean, I think, I think the, the, if we, if we kept that seventy-three thousand, just added to our library book purchase, we'd still be below how much they spend on books, and we, we service an entirely different area. Our, our population base is a hundred and eighteen thousand, theirs is thirty-seven. So it, to me, it's a, it's, they don't need the money, and I think our, our own private system, our public system needs it. Because we have to take, when we have an increase in our utility costs, we have to take money from our book budget in order to keep the lights on, which, that shouldn't happen. We should have the number, be able to buy books when needed with our budget funds. Thank you.
Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna control my tongue and say I do not support this amendment. Seventy-one thousand, because another government entity makes a policy that you personally don't agree with, you're gonna lash out and, and destroy a partnership that you have with one of our cities? I think that's ridiculous. Thank you.
Let's see. Commissioner Cook, you've spoken to it, so we'll have to come back to you. Commissioner Williams?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I respect the call for question.[867.61][867.61](Laughter).
Mr. Bain, the second. All in favor of calling the question? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. You ready to vote? Resolution seven-eleven-thirteen? I'm, I'm sorry, seven, oh, I'm sorry, we're just voting on the amendment.
Let me change that. It's to three, please.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna make sure I understand, a no vote does not remove the money, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So if you wanna take money away from Brentwood, you vote yes?
Yes.
Okay.[908.48][908.48](Laughter). Just clarifying.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we're gonna vote on seven-eleven-three. If you, if you, to amend it, if you're in favor of the amendment to remove the seventy-one thousand from Brentwood Library, push yes. If not, push no. Anyone wishing to change the vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Four yes, nineteen no.
Okay. So we're back to the original resolution of seven-eleven-three? Any discussion on the resol, original resolution? I see none. You ready to vote? All in favor of resolution seven-eleven-three, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty yes, three no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven-eleven-four. Resolution appropriating two million dollars education privilege tax funds and appropriating the related operating transfers for two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve rural debt service expenditures. Commissioner Brockman?
Move for approval.
Uh, Budget Committee?
Budget Committee, four-four-zero against.
Education Committee?
Education, five-four, general against.
Uh, explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Yes, the cost of school construction necessitates using the privileged tax funds as approved, and I would ask you to support this.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, I'm opposed to this, and, and to me, this is getting to be a problem. Since two thousand and eight, we've allocated, between adequate facilities tax and privilege taxes, sixteen point two million dollars to rural debt service, zero to general debt service. We've had two high schools built during that period, and I think you're, the, some of this money should be going to general debt service, because we're raising their taxes this year, too. And you shouldn't be taking all the money that's being raised by these things and not funding the payment of capital cost for schools and the general debt service. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I see none. You ready to vote on seven-eleven-four? If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change the vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, one no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven-eleven-five. Resolution of the governing body of Williamson County, Tennessee, authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of interest-bearing two thousand eleven, twelve general purpose school fund tax anticipation notes not to exceed fifteen million dollars. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Proper motion, Commissioner Little, the second. Budget Committee report?
I'm thinking the Budget Committee was three-one, I miss, three-four, one against.
Uh, explanation, Commissioner Green?
Uh, we, not that we do this every year, but we kinda do it every year, in anticipation of funds that being allocated with, the dedicated funds we have now that are anticipated to be used before the monies from the taxes start coming into the county, we go ahead and borrow this fifteen million dollars towards that anticipated taxes coming in. But we're gonna have to spend the money prior to those taxes come in. So we, we go to the fifteen million dollar appropriation.
All right. Any questions? Commissioner Green? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of seven-eleven-five, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, one no.
Resolution seven-eleven-six. Resolution, oh, resolution passes. Resolution seven-eleven-six. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand eleven, twelve Register of Deeds budget by one hundred thousand eight hundred dollars revenues to come from document recording fees. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Williams, the second. Budget Committee report?
Uh, Budget Committee was four-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Green?
What this is, is from the fees that we charge the register, the registers of deeds, charges fees for recording. We're using those funds that they received to take care of the expenditures that are listed in the part-time pay, lease payments and maintenance and capital outlay for data processing equipment.
All right.
This is fees from recordings that we charged at that time for recording fees.
Any discussion on this resolution? I see none. If you're in favor of seven-eleven-six, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven-eleven-seven. Resolution requesting approval of three million sixty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars for the Williamson County Board of Education, two thousand eleven, twelve capital needs. Commissioner Brockman?
Move for approval.
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Smith, the second. School Board was ten-four-zero against. Education Committee?
Education, five yes, zero no.
Budget Committee?
Budget Committee, four-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Um, yes, these funds are needed for capital expenditures, for maintenance and technology needs to take place this summer before school opens, and they are coming from the general purpose school fund balance.
Any discussion on seven-eleven-seven? I see none. You ready to vote? All in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, one no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven-eleven-eight. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand eleven, twelve Highway Department budget by a hundred thousand dollars in related operating transfers for paving expenses, revenues to come from highway privilege tax funds. Commissioner Green?
Uh, move for approval.
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Cook, the second. Highway Commission, uh, I don't know if we have, we have a report on the Highway Commission? Okay. Budget Committee report?
Uh, Budget Committee, four-four-zero against.
Okay. I've just found out Highway Commission was five to zero. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Uh, as it says in the resolution, it's to, uh, for the Highway Commission, Williamson County submits a list of projects in our related districts to be earmarked for paving projects throughout the incoming year. And my question right away was a hundred thousand dollars, and to not do this. But David's not here, but with the mayor, could you help me explain that we tried to do this to maintain a level so we do not need to lose road taxes?
Yeah, the bottom, bottom line, the privilege tax that we generate on the new home sales, you're helping to hold the budget down so that it goes back over, which keeps our ratio between the state.
Yeah.
We've done this every year, very simply.
Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote, seven-eleven-eight? If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three yes.
Resolution seven-eleven-nine. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand eleven, twelve Parks and Recreation budget by three thousand two hundred dollars, revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Cook, the second. Parks and Rec Committee?
Was five-four-zero against.
Budget Committee?
Budget Committee, four-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is donations from the Hillsborough area, Rec Association going into improvements and maintenance of their facility out there.
All right. Any discussion on this resolution? I see none. Ready to vote, seven-eleven-nine? If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Resolution seven-eleven-ten. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve Parks and Recreation budget by five thousand dollars, revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Cook, the second. Parks and Rec Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Budget Committee, four-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Very similar to the last one, this is donations from the Tennessee Football Club to go into lawn products. So it's just donations.
Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? Resolution seven-eleven-ten. If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Okay. Heading into other resolutions? Resolution seven-eleven-twelve. Resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into a two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve contractual agreement with the state of Tennessee for one million five thousand nine hundred dollars for local health services. Commissioner Wilson?
Uh, yes, I move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hester, the second. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee, four-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Wilson?
Uh, this is funds for the state of Tennessee for one million five hundred, five, nine hundred for local health services.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution seven-eleven-twelve, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven-eleven-thirteen. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to execute a grant agreement with the state of Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation for the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve budget. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval. Second.
Commissioner Little, the second. Solid Waste Board?
We did not go, this did not go before them because it's one we've had every year. We'd already met that, that month.
Okay. And this is already in the budget, too?
Yes, it was.
Uh, Budget Committee?
Budget Committee, four-four-zero against.
All right. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
As I said, this is something that we do every year. It helps us dispose of our waste tires, and it's a grant from the Environmental and Conservation Group. And we certainly wanna keep on getting rid of our waste tires.
Yes, we do. Uh, you ready to vote? Resolution seven-eleven-thirteen. If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Resolution seven-eleven-fourteen. Resolution thirteen passes. Resolution seven-eleven-fourteen. A resolution creating an Office of Public Safety in confirmation of the appointment of the Office of Public Safety Director by the county mayor. Commissioner Langston?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Little, the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Six, uh, four-zero against.
Uh, Budget Committee?
Budget Committee, four-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Langston?
Yes, I think everyone's familiar with this. This is part of the recommendation that came from the committee that was, last year in law enforcement, and it's combining some positions and appointing Mr. Jorgensen to head that up. But I would ask everyone to please endorse that.
Ready to vote? Resolution seven-eleven-fourteen. If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven-eleven-fifteen.[1735.65] Resolution 71115, resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the state of Tennessee, the Department of Military, and the Tennessee Emergency Management Agency. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Cook the second. Property Committee?
540 against.
Parks and Rec Committee?
540 against.
Budget Committee?
Budget Committee 440 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
Yes, this is about the flood and the buyouts of the flood. There is a 12.5 county funding condition, but all is in order to go ahead with this buyout program and it's through FEMA and the federal disaster declaration.
Very good.
And FEMA.
Ready to vote? If you're in favor of 71115, push the aye button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
23 yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution 71117, resolution approving the terms of the sale of real property owned by Williamson County to the City of Franklin and authorizing the Williamson County mayor to execute all documents to complete the transaction. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Little the second. Property Committee?
540 against.
Budget Committee?
Budget Committee 440 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
The city has requested to purchase this area in order to do the widening of the Hillsborough Road in preparation for the extension of Mack Hatcher. They've offered $43,800 for 3,019 square feet of land. It is not land that is conducive to anything that we're doing with right now. If you go out and notice the underbrush there on the sort of the front of the Columbia State and the animal control area, so it will help visibility and be better for everybody.
You ready to vote? If you're in favor of 71117, push the aye button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
23 yes.
Resolution 71118, resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to enter into a lease agreement with AT&amp;T for space on a new light pole and on real property to install and store telecommunications equipment. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Little the second. Property Committee?
540 against.
Parks and Rec Committee?
540 against.
Budget Committee?
440 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
Well, we have received a request from AT&amp;T to increase the height of a light pole on Manly Lane. This will be used for our ball field for the recreational purposes. It will be an 80-foot steel light pole and house the lights for night games at the ball field. So it is a condition of ownership that we do this and we'd ask for your support. So win-win for everybody.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of 71118, push the aye button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
23 yes.
Resolution 71120, resolution to express the intent of the Williamson County Commission to work with the Community Housing Partnership of Williamson County for participation in the $1 Homes for Local Governments program and to authorize the execution of the required documents to participate in the program. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Cook the second. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee 440 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Yes, this is a program offered by the United States Department of Housing to the political jurisdictions to acquire HUD foreclosed homes in Williamson County. We can purchase them for $1. Having the opportunity to do this, we have to be acted on within 10 days. So we're giving the mayor opportunity and giving him the authorization to trigger that ownership and that purchase. In the meantime, we can fix up those homes and resell them or we can turn them over to Community Housing Development asking as a pass-through entry for low and median income or moderate income residents. But it's made to, available to this public jurisdiction, political jurisdiction and the jurisdiction, as I said before, we have 10 days to act on this, so we're going to give the mayor the opportunity and the permission to go ahead and do that without having to come to the commission and do that because we can't do it in 10 days, but the mayor can. So, ask for your approval. It's a good program.
Very good. It is a good program. You ready to vote? 71120, if you're in favor, push the aye button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
23 yes.
Resolution passes. Now, if you guys remember, sometime early this morning, we deferred the resolution to 71121. So here it is, and this is, it was on the consent agenda and this is the one we were looking for, the last one. So Resolution 71121, resolution appropriating the county mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the federal government concerning the provision and continued maintenance of the county park off of Natchez Trace Parkway. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Green the second. Parks and Rec Committee?
5 in favor, 0 against as amended.
Budget Committee?
Budget Committee 440 against as amended.
Okay. When do y'all want to offer that amendment?
I'd like to offer an amendment. In the second whereas, replace the term transfer ownership with authorized use, so that the sentence reads, whereas United States government authorized use of real property to Williamson County in the vicinity of Natchez Trace Highway for the construction of a road to access the county park.
Proper motion, I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Commissioner Brockman the second. Any discussion on the amendment? I see none. You got it loaded, Linda. Ready to vote on the amendment? If you're in favor, push the aye button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Linda, I mean, Ms. Anderson.
23 yes.
Resolution passes.
No.
The amendment passes to the resolution. Now back to the main resolution, 71121 is amended. Any discussion on it as amended? I see none. Ready to vote? All in favor, push the aye button. Opposed, your no button? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
23 yes.
All right. That wraps up this commission meeting. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
We are missing three conflict of interest. Sir, we have Commissioner Hayes, I don't have her copy, Commissioner Wilson, and Commissioner Hawkins.
Okay.
Conflict of interest.
If y'all would sign those and get those to Ms. Anderson.
Thank you.
To George, so moved. Thank you all. Thank you very much.